Turn our phones off. I call the meeting to order. Now, this is a meeting of the School District of Waukesha, the full board meeting on Wednesday, January fourteenth, 2015. Happy New Year to each and every one of you in the audience here and at home. I hope everyone has a very prosperous 2015. To start our meeting off, we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please call the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzink.
Here.
Steve Edlin.
Here.
Ellen Langel.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichak.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Sue, will you also please verify that we've been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. And tonight, we usually have bright lights that kind of kicks off the meeting, but we don't have bright lights this evening. So we'll move right into recognitions and Chris Hedstrom. Okay, how about if we swap a couple items around here? We'll move on to our student representatives' report from Waukesha West High School. Apuva?
Apuva.
Apuva?
Apuva.
Apuva, I'm sorry. I wiped out your name last time. And Brandon, why don't you step forward and we'll go into your reports now. I have one more chance to get your name right here.
Um, what is the airplay code?
I'm not sure what the code is.
We got it.
What is the airplay code?
It was a code to get in, so, yeah.
And, can I?
Yes.
All right, um, as you all know, we are from Waukesha West, and the first thing that's up is band. And recently, actually, the past Wednesday, we had a band concert involving concert band, symphonic winds and percussion, as well as the Wind Ensemble. Today, there's a jazz concert at West as well, which includes both morning jazz and jazz one. And next Friday, Wind Ensemble is going to the National Band Association and staying there overnight in Wisconsin Rapids.
Oh, and choir, just actually, the, let's see, hold on, let me start with, they had a concert on December seventeenth, it was their Christmas concert, it was very nice, I actually did go to it. They will also be attending the Wisconsin Choral Directors Association State Convention sometime later this month. And then, actually, one of the past Waukesha West alumni, Luke Duttell, he's in a, he's not at UW Madison, he is in an acapella group, he and his acapella group visited Waukesha West and they did a small showcase for the choir. And then, moving on. In orchestra news, they had their Christmas concert this past December, it was the Monday before our Christmas break. And this March, they are having a Mardi Gras-themed concert as well at West.
Drama is currently preparing for the winter show, The Phantom of the Opera. This will be taking place at the end of February and a few days in the beginning of March. And as we talked about last time, they were doing their one-act play, The Monkey's Paw. They performed very well at state, they won the 2014 Critics' Choice Award, as well as the Most Outstanding Ensemble Award. Right, Student Council, we are currently working on planning SADs, which will be taking February, taking place on February fourteenth, the same day as Valentine's Day, which makes an easy theme for us. And we did try working with the other two high schools to do a combined SADs, but unfortunately, it didn't work out this year, maybe next year. And at the same time, we're still fundraising for a mascot, but we still need a little bit more money before that happens.
Also, another thing we did in Student Council this past December was the food drive for the Salvation Army. Last, last year we raised sixty-eight hundred items, and this year we're still counting up items, I believe.
Sixteen hundred?
No, sixty-eight hundred, I said.
Yeah.
And we are competing for the Golden Can Trophy once again, there it is on the right side. And it was a big success in our school, we had, we had all the food that we'd got donated in the main atrium of Waukesha West. And there was a lot, I didn't quite count the numbers because that's not my job, but there was, there was a lot, there was a lot of boxes, there was a lot of good stuff going to Salvation Army, so, I think it's a good success.
Yeah, teachers held competitions in between classes, Student Council went around in neighborhoods, we distributed flyers one week, and then the next week, we went and collected the food that people had put out for us. Girls' basketball is currently ranked first in the state, and their next game is this Friday at 5:45 against McGuanego at McGuanego High School. Nationals, National Honor Society is currently working on their community project. What we're doing is we're arranging to have care packages sent to soldiers. This will be taking place during the first week of February, maybe even leading into the second week. It depends on how many we send.
All right, so, just recently, this past Friday, our academic decathlon team had our regionals competition, which we took first place in at our conference at the GE Medical Center over in Pawnee. There's a nice picture of our whole team, there's me and Apuva, and the rest of us, so, they're a little younger than us, but yeah, we did well. We are second overall in state so far, and we are working on the state competition, which will be taking place March twelfth and thirteenth, or the exact?
I believe so.
It's two days, it's a Thursday and a Friday, so we're preparing for that, and we'll see who goes on to Nationals after that, so, yeah.
And now that it's the end of the semester, we actually have an exam schedule this year. We had dropped the exam schedule for two years, I believe, and now we have a new exam schedule in which we take two exams in the beginning of the day, which are an hour and a half long, and then we continue on and take a few more classes based on the schedule they've given us. A few students like it, at least there's one designated exam time, but at the same time, it's a little confusing, so it's not appreciated by all. And that's it.
So, yeah, you can take questions as well, too, so.
Yes, Ms. Reinichak.
Thank you. I have two questions, great job, by the way. Fundraising for a mascot, is, do you mean like a mascot costume?
Yes.
Okay. About how much is it?
Um, I was looking at a few of the prices, we expected it to be two thousand, but I think it's coming around one thousand three hundred, so.
Okay. And then your academic decathlon in March, is that at West?
Oh, no, that's in the Wisconsin Dells at the Great Wilderness Resort, actually.
There will be twenty schools competing at that level.
Thank you.
Um, where's, where's the, yes, thank you, where's the state decathlon?
Oh, in the Wisconsin Dells at the?
On Dells, okay, that's right, you said that. And how about Nationals this year?
In Garden Grove, California.
Ooh, that's nice. And what's your topic this year, or your theme?
It's a long title, but it basically revolves around innovations and inventions throughout history.
And energy.
Yeah.
The most part.
And energy, okay.
So, what that really, for, because it's more like broken down into two things, but, so for subjects like art and music, it focuses more around revolutionary things such as electronic music and working with synthesizers to like baroque genres, classical genres, and whereas in art, it'll go through each time period in different times, or different societies around the world. So we had to have stuff like, stuff in the Renaissance, stuff from Ninth Dynasty China, it's one of those.
It's through the ages for the most part, but then, if you get into topics such as science, it's very focused on renewable energy.
Yes.
And then social science is focused on different acts, policies over the years, and when did the environmental movement begin? So it's basically late nineteen hundreds.
It focuses more on a concept over a specific thing, which is new for the program, but it's, it's not too bad, it's interesting.
Quite a topic.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, seems to me just such a plethora of information. Um, when you prepare your, your individual speeches, does it have to relate to that topic?
No.
No?
Not at all.
It can, if you want it to be, but we usually try to, you study it so often that you kind of want to get away from it.
Okay.
Because you don't want to surround yourself with it too much, so.
Well, I, I was invited a couple of years ago to listen to your, your speeches before you went, I think it was to Nationals, and I'd love to, I'd love to come again and, and listen to you practice, it was a wonderful experience for me. Because we can't go to the, you know, the state or the Nationals to hear you, so if you have an opportunity for someone to come and listen, just let me know.
All right, sure, we can do that.
Mr. Edlin?
Just want to drop a big hint out there. One of the most notable people in music happens to be from the city of Waukesha, by the name of Les Paul.
Yep.
Born here, and he's buried here. And there's a wealth of information, he was not just a musician, he's also in the Inventors' Hall of Fame, Musicians' Hall of Fame. He has so many awards that are listed actually at his gravesite, if you ever have a chance to go over to the cemetery and view the monument that's set up in his memorial. And there's a wealth of information, even on YouTube, I think, just dropping a hint out there, but it may represent Waukesha quite well in the area of music history. All right, you can do that.
Thank you.
Your T-shirt, I can do that, so.
Anybody else? Ellen Langel.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for your report and good luck in your, the rest of your year, this is great. But is there just one young woman on academic decathlon? I was counting and it does look like one.
There is one alternate, but otherwise, in the nine-person competing team, it's only me.
Interesting, good, thanks.
It's not really a matter of who comes out to try out or something.
Yeah, I think that's part of it, but still, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for your report on what's happening at West, and we wish you luck moving forward in 2015.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go back to recognitions. Chris Hedstrom will be presenting our December Employee Recognition Award, if you remember, we held that over to this month.
You're right, we did hold that over to this month, and the Employee Recognition Award for December 2014 is being presented this evening to Brian Olson. Brian could not be with us again tonight, but we have Glenn Norther here to accept the award on his behalf, so Glenn, if you'd come up with me, I have a few words, and then Glenn has a few words that Brian would like him to convey to the board. Brian started with the School District of Waukesha as a custodian in 2011. When Brian was a night substitute custodian for the district, he did an excellent job no matter where he was sent. He takes great pride and ownership in his job duties, and let me explain to you, for those of you that may not be aware, a substitute custodian is actually, you actually have to work your way up to be a substitute custodian, because you need to be able to fill in wherever the need is. So we, that's a regular position, it's not somebody you call at the last minute, it's someone that works here every day because we have a need every single day to cover for vacations and absences and whatnot. So he was hired as a sub-custodian, but he's also a carpenter by trade, and when he is not performing his sub-duties, he assists in that capacity. Brian's been very instrumental in some of the changes made in our instructional spaces such as Saratoga STEM, as well as Horning Flight, and many others. In September 2014, Brian assisted in setting up cabinets and cutting and setting up a countertop in the ceramics classroom at South High School. He did an outstanding job using his carpentry skills, also managed his own work for the evening, and then helped out other sub-custodians with work that evening. Because of Brian's skills and his willingness to assist, the ceramics classroom remodel was completed successfully. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I congratulate Brian Olson on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award. Glenn?
Brian regrets not being able to be here tonight, but he wanted me to let the board know that he's very humbled by the award. He was surprised, but again, very humbled, and he really appreciates the opportunity to be able to, to serve the district and create these learning environments for our children, so, he wanted me to pass that on.
Glenn, would you like to come forth and accept?
Pass that on to Brian? And shake his hand for us?
I will.
And tell him, thank you for all that he does in the service and the teamwork, and we look for many more years with him to be on our team. Thanks.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we're going to move on to the time where we listen to our citizens speak. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes of time to speak in order for us to hear from our community, and then get on to our, our agenda for the rest of the meeting. Mrs. Brzink, we'll signal the speaker at two and a half minutes, let him know that there's thirty seconds left to wrap up their comments. Now, we expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cellphones at this time. And Sue, do we have any speakers that are signed up?
No, we do not.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to come forth and address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our minute approval. We have a couple of minutes to approve here. We have the full Board of Education, and actually, that's the only one.
Yeah.
Just one to approve tonight. I'd be looking for a motion at this time.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Brzink, seconded by Ellen Langel. Any discussion? Okay, Sue, will you take the roll call?
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. It passes nine zero, Sue. We'll move on to our communications, and we'll begin with our superintendent, Mr. Gray.
No correspondence this evening.
Okay. Hey, Mrs. Brzink, will you please give us an update on the Waukesha Education Foundation?
I will, thank you very much, Mr. Como. First, in addition to planning for the upcoming events, the Foundation Board of Directors conducted several items of business this past month. The Board's 2015 officers were elected, Kathy Runty as Board Chair, Sally Machelko as Vice Chair, and Ann Peskavis as Treasurer. Dr. Jean Shoemaker and Diane Voight have joined the Board as our newest directors. We extend our appreciation and thanks to our outgoing members, Susan Lewis and Christine Howard. The Waukesha Education Foundation is now twelve years old. To help in setting the future direction of the foundation and enhance our mission of raising funds over the next few months, we will be creating a vision statement and setting specific goals. And lastly, work has begun on the winter Foundation Newsletter with publication scheduled for February or March. This concludes my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brzink. And we'll move on to our Safety Committee report given by Mr. Bill Baumgart.
Glad other things are going so fast, because I'm going to take up a little bit more time tonight.
You're, you're putting the brakes on?
There's really two parts to the Safety Committee report, first dealing with the Crisis Response Plan, which we've been working on for a couple of months, well, actually, a couple of years, but it's really coming to conclusion now. Joe Cook and others have finished a thorough update of the Crisis Response Plan, meeting the forecast deadline for January. This is a private document, remind you of that, and will not be publicly available for security reasons. The binders are ready for distribution to the individual schools. Meetings with administrators of each school, excuse me, are scheduled over the next three to four weeks. They will usually meet with a principal and another person, so there's always backup. Additional next steps for the crisis, for this plan, include further meetings with the school resource officers, some technology introductions into the procedures, and a set of necessary materials to be located at each location. Joe and Sarah Barant met over the holidays and developed a yearly calendar of events and checkpoints to ensure that this plan is properly used and maintained and kept up to date, and not, doesn't fall through the crack again. This is a dynamic document, and plans are to review it annually for any changes necessary. The, still talking about the Crisis Response Plan, but kind of segueing into this morning safety meeting, Heartland Business Systems, the company that we use for many of our information technology matters, gave a brief presentation at the safety meeting commenting on the plan. The gentleman has seen a number of plans from other districts and says that we are out in front of everybody on what Joe and his team have put together. Their involvement in this plan will be the integration of technology into the, the Crisis Response Plan itself. And the other, other half of the report here is simply the Safety Committee, at the Safety Committee meeting this morning, we reviewed the student and employee accident reports with nothing unusual, no unusual trends of incidents, and our school nurse, Terry Leverens, reported that we do not have any new hooping cough cases, and we are not running high on flu absences, so, we're being healthy. And that would conclude my?
Thank you, Joe, for your, your hard work on that, and?
Yeah, he's done a wonderful job.
Want to roll right into the charter school report?
Yeah, got a few, few of the schools reporting on, a few things, East High School, remember, that's the old HP. Students are focusing on demonstrating their proficiency in the learning targets as we near the end of the semester, and Sharon reports that our enrollment will increase for the second semester as we process through some additional referrals. E-Achieve, Rick reports, very happy to celebrate that while our secondary students show mixed results of the growth on the MAP tests, the elementary students significantly exceeded national norms for growth from September to December. Remember, we are running a pilot with our, our elementary program right now, and Rick reports that we continue to make improvements to our elementary pilot based on parent and student feedback. Further reports that the open enrollment except, this is always a tongue twister for me, I'm sorry, open enrollment except, exception application continues to be received daily, the pace of which is really beginning to pick up as prospective students are looking for options that are available to them, including, of course, E-Achieve. And talking about marketing, we have decided not to run any television commercials this year for the E-Achieve Academy. Our data show that we have not gotten the return on the investment we were hoping for, and we'll be focusing on direct mail, online, and radio advertising. Report from the Engineering and Health Academy, which really, there's a, part of this is related to the STEM, Saratoga STEM, but Adam McDonald and Tim Joint will be at, and one of the board members be aware of this, Adam and Tim Joint will be at the Education Convention next Wednesday and Thursday, the twenty-first and twenty-second of January, in the area that they call the School Fair, where the schools can have programs that they can demonstrate and brag about, so that's, that's a real positive for our district.
Are you talking about one of the sectionals, Bill, or are you talking?
No, no, that's, it's, it's in that big exhibit hall, there's a section in the back of the hall?
Oh, okay.
Where each?
Great.
The districts can set up a?
Is there a time that, is, that there's?
It's, it's open when the exhibit hall is open.
Oh, okay, great.
So it's, it's a very positive thing. Also, the Engineering Academy and the Health Academy, along with STEM Saratoga, this past, well, two parts to this, this past Monday, the eighth graders from STEM Saratoga were able to visit and tour South High School. I'm going to read this, because it gets a little bit lengthy, but it's very positive. Jim reports that we'd really like to have our eighth graders experience a day in the life of a high school student as they begin their transition into the land of giants. The day is set up for rotations of classes, so that the STEM students are able to check out some of the high school courses that they will be seeing shortly, as well as the academies. Touch bases with Tim and the counselors at the school, see the layout of the school, and there will be subsequent plans for those students to be attending West and North as well. The North visit is scheduled for February third, getting an nod from Jody back there, and Dave LeBord and Jim are still working on the details for their trip to Waukesha West. Jim reports, we wanted to make sure that we brought our students to these sites around the enrollment period to give them insight into our school, and that they may never have, a school that they may never have seen but are thinking about attending. This and the next report are very, I think are very important, because we struggled with wanting to maintain a continuity between our middle schools and our, particularly, our charter schools and the academies, so that we can see that we have a continuous flow for these kids, and, and they don't lose anything that they've gained in their, in their middle school. And now, bringing that into light from the STEM Saratoga again, is this past, it would be last week, Wednesday, we held an open house for potential incoming families, those that would be entering maybe the lottery, et cetera, and was amazing, Jim reports, it was amazing how many excited families showed up. He feels he had thirty to forty attendees at each of the two sessions, as, the families are hungry to get into STEM Saratoga as they were at Randall. Love seeing the demonstrations of Future City and Dream House models that they had available, and the students wanted to stem the next, start, start at STEM the next day. So, the, the energy is always that way over there. Holding another open house tonight. So anticipating another large turnout, and that, oh, I got, yeah, that concludes my charter school report.
Okay, any questions for Bill?
I know it was a lot of stuff in there, but just some really positive things, and understanding the continuity, I think, is so important.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Open enrollment is upon us, and we need to go through a process of approving the space that is available. Joe, will you fill us in and give us some background on this?
Sure, thank you. Annually, at the January Board Meeting, the Board of Education is required to set the number of seats for open enrollment for the upcoming school year, so for the 2015-2016 school year. It, it is required in statute that it be at the January meeting, not the December meeting, anytime before then. The district last school year went through an extensive policy review and revision, did some updating to policy to ensure that we're in line with state statute in our open enrollment practices. Based off of policy and based off of future enrollment projections, we need to look at the recommended seats tonight for the general population of students, and then also our bilingual population and our special education population of students. Based off of the projections, there's a document in front of you, enrollment projections for 2015-16, you, you will see, based off of class size limit, which is related to the FTE, the teacher numbers that we have, the number of what our actual capacity is, the projected enrollment for next year, so, again, using our best guess in January to see where we will be at next school year. We have to set those seats, so, what's before you would indicate, ten seats in the four-year-old kindergarten, twenty-three seats in second grade, eleven seats in fifth grade, fifteen seats in ninth grade, eight seats in eleventh grade, six seats in the twelfth grade. The other grades at this time would be closed, students that are not immediately accepted in open enrollment would be put on a waiting list for future considerations. Again, we're, we're setting based off of our best projections, so we could always go over that, we just can't go under that at those grade levels. On the second page, in the, in the proposal, breaks down our special education programs and the number of students that are currently with us, our FTE that's associated with those students, and then what our projections would be for next year. And when you look at this document, due to current enrollment in the district, we were proposing that we have, we don't have any seats available in special ed. Again, that's based off of student population, current FTE.
Okay, and bilingual programs?
The bilingual programs, looking at the chart, we have six seats available in the second grade, three, twenty-four seats available in the third grade, fifteen seats available in the fifth grade, and again, based off of the same processes that we've used for the general population and for the special ed populations, that's how we determine the seats. and for the special ed populations, that's how we determine the seats in-
Okay.
-in the bilingual programs.
Mrs. Presink.
Yes. Um, Joe, in the special education program, it says open seats. You're talking about enrollment from students in another school district because we have to service our own children, right? So, if we have extra kids that are identified, we certainly will place them-
Correct. This is, this is, public school open enrollment, we have the obligation to serve first the students in the Waukesha schools and then anybody that we've accepted and passed open enrollment. So those are our students, we're here to serve them. What we're looking at is what space would be available given our current staffing and given our current student population.
For non-resident, residential students?
Yep.
Yep.
One more question, please. And in the chart, the first chart that you have here, this is for all schools except Woodyer and Butler, is that correct?
Correct. Woodyer and Butler, those are closed, we noted that on there, those would be closed for school choice, so that would be our internal transfer process. Through open enrollment, families apply for the district, they don't apply for a specific school. They can ask for a school, but the district ultimately controls where the student would be placed.
What about, Joe, a student that has been attending a different district and wants to come back to the district but wants to go to a specific school? Is that still considered student choice or do they have to go to their neighborhood school?
Would, would that, would that be, they, they live in the district-
Yes.
-that they open enrolled out?
Yes.
They would come back and, and their first assignment would be their, their, their attendance area of school.
Their attendance area, okay.
However, if they, if they applied in time and there was a seat open at a, at a, at a choice school, we would allow that. So-
Okay.
We, we want it, we, we want to try to make it as accessible as possible for parents.
Okay.
But that would be a situation where they would be entitled to apply.
But they do have the opportunity to request that.
They do.
Thank you.
So, Joe, we need, we need to approve these numbers this evening, that's, this is an action item?
Correct. It's an action item, it would be, approve the open enrollment seats as presented.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Moved by Mr. Baumgart? Is that a second by Mr. Edlund?
That was actually a question for discussion.
Oh, okay.
A second point. Joe, I was looking under the-
Second by Ellen Langel. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Edlin.
I was looking at the bilingual programs in the third grade. It shows that we have open seat capacity of 24, but it shows that we have one more, what appears to be an FTE, assigned to that grade level than we do in other areas. So we've got a teacher, but we have no students at this point. Will that, if we don't get the enrollment, the open enrollment at 24, are we going to keep that teacher in this position?
These are seats that are available across all of our programs. So we have, while we may have 24 seats available, it may look like one FTE. Those seats could be sprinkled across several elementary schools and it wouldn't nicely break down into one full FTE. We could be running high class sizes at one elementary school. That's why we're proposing to add 24 seats to fill up a caseload for the teacher or increase the caseload for the teachers that would be across the, the four elementary sites where we, we provide these services.
How do we allocate the FTEs per each school then? If we're not, you know, if what we're doing is totalizing that, that capacity that we need throughout the district. So one school may have very low enrollment and have a teacher who has very, you know, small class sizes and another one may be, but it looks like if we're going to have this many seats available, I don't know that, I don't know where the gap is. It seems like there's a gap somewhere.
One of the considerations that we make is if we were to eliminate a section at a school, what would that do to the remaining section's class sizes? If we were at, in a situation, for instance, with projected enrollments and, and, please allow me just to grab at some numbers, say, we were projecting to go into the year with sections of 18 students in the, in the class, and we would deem that as, as a, as a good class size for these, these teachers to work with students. And we had to make the decision that one, you know, say one section was going to come in at 12, would it have a negative impact on student learning if we were to disperse those kids across the other teachers? Would that drive their class sizes up to 26, 27 students? Or would it bring them up to 21, 22 students? A lot of that factors into the decision making. So we, when we project for open enrollment, we have to come to you with what is it across the district? And then after we establish those seats, we get our applications and then we go about plugging the students into where we have, have spaces for them.
Okay. Keep in mind that when you open enroll in, it's to the district, not to a specific school. So, so we, if, if they want to come to Waukesha, we still have the right to place them wherever. I mean, we try to, uh, uh, address the school that they want, but it, you, you don't open enroll to a school, it's to a district. So we do have some flexibility there in, in how we deal with those seats so that we're not overloading a class or, uh, under, you know, we don't have a minimal amount of classroom.
So currently, we're offering our bilingual programs in four elementary schools for the third grade?
Um, Banting, Bethesda, Hire at this point?
And Blair.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So we got the four schools.
Well, Hire, Hire is still a work in progress. We're offering that for next year if we have enough enrollments.
Okay.
That's going to depend on enrollments.
Just seems like we're projecting a lot of capacity at that grade level compared to the other grade levels. The other ones seem relatively close in the student-teacher ratio-
Mm-hmm.
-except for the third grade. And I'm not sure what's driving that number. It, it looks like it's being driven just by the FTE that we have in there.
And, and that's part of the conversation. I, I think another thing that factors in is we get into, when students are actually in the enrollment process for the district, we do have students who we are projecting to go, and again, I'm grabbing, you know, projecting to go to Blair, but over the course of the next three, four, five months, may relocate into the Bethesda attendance area or vice versa. So what we're trying to do is account for some of the movement that we have in the district with these seats. And then also, where are those students currently attending school and how is that impacting the numbers?
Okay.
Mr. O'Brien?
So the, when I look at the two, three split, that's, that's one class that's split between two grades? Correct?
Correct, correct.
And normally you'd run with the lower class size if you're going to use a split class?
If, if the, the, the split is there to address what would be a low third grade and a high second grade.
Okay, but if you're, if you're going to use a, a split class, you would tend to be lower class sizes for a two, three class versus a straight two or a straight three. If you're trying to manage the resources, right?
You're doing the best, the best to do that, correct?
That's your preference.
That, that would be the preference.
Okay. So, um, so it wouldn't be, your preference wouldn't be to be 24, you'd want to have something smaller than that if you could relative to the average for that split class?
Correct.
Thanks.
Dr. Langel?
Silly question, but just out of curiosity, and you don't have to answer this tonight, but looking at demographics, you know, and looking at the 2008 crash and then the 2001, you know, nine 11, it, I just wonder across the country if there are fewer babies that were born. Because we have second grade and third grade, all of a sudden, huge amount of room. And I just wonder demographically, and you, you don't have to answer it, but I just think it'd be interesting to look at it and see across the country if those enrollments are less in those areas.
Could be across the country. Now, we've looked at the, you know, the, the enrollments were kind of declining.
Mm-hmm.
This year's 12th graders bigger than next year's, but we're seeing a little bit of growth at the younger grades now. I have not, I have not done a comparison this year, but the last couple of years, each kindergarten class was a little bit bigger than the one prior to that. So, it was kind of a, kind of a dip at this point, but I, we've not compared it to, to national averages at this point.
Just think it'd be interesting to see, because that happens, you know-
Oh, yeah.
-demographics, it's always interesting to see these waves of, okay. And I want that answer tomorrow morning.
[laughing]
I'm just kidding.
Just, just out of curiosity, when we look at last year and the number of seats that were available, did we fill those all for the most part last year or did-
I, I-
-fill a portion of them roughly?
My guess is that not, not every one of them, no. I mean, you know, another, another factor in this too is that we don't know all the students who might be open and rolling out of Waukesha too. You know, we're, we're close enough to Pawkey and Elm Brook and in fact, some of our people live closer to those, but we just don't know what those numbers, which, which could also impact that as well. But I, I really doubt that we had filled all those seats with open enroll, open enrolled students.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
I'm still working out the math, but it, it seems to me that if we dropped an FTE there, we'd, we'd be boosting the class sizes up quite a bit. I mean, you'd be at 26, 27 instead of 24, which would be your target.
Correct. We did, we did talk about that as we were teasing it out and working, Stephanie Peterson was, was integral in helping get this done and she's had her eyes on enrollment now for the past year and a half, paying close attention to where we're at and projecting.
Right. And some of that depends on the grade level. I mean, K 1, 2, we're always going to opt for less than, you know, if, if we have 29 at, at, at fifth grade, we might go with that. We're not going to go with 29 at K 1, 2. I mean, we would never do that.
Yeah, I would-
Mr. Brian?
Mr., okay. I would, I would say usually we always look towards class sizes, trying to maintain them as in the, anything, grade three and lower is when you have those pretty key years where you're teaching reading skills and if you don't do it there, you're in trouble the rest of the way.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the open enrollment space as presented. Sue, will you take the roll call?
Steve Edlund.
Hi.
Karen Reinichek.
Hi.
Barbara Presink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Joseph Cohen.
Aye. It passes nine, zero. Thank you, Joe, for that work. I'm moving on to our consent agenda. Laurie, did we have any gifts to report on this evening?
We do. We have two schools who have gifts to report. Lust Paul Middle School received $2,000 from Paul and Kathleen Omen and a matching $2,000 from Northwestern Mutual. These gifts will be used to purchase technology for the building to inspire their students. We also have, for Flight Academy, they received a DVD/CD duplicator, ink and CD, DVD cases with an estimated value of $1,336 from Tell Inc., America's Inc. This will be allowed, this will, this will allow the students to produce at scale evidence to share with others through the CD and DVD format. And that was at Horning Middle School.
Thank you, Mrs. Clifton. Thank you for the generous gifts. Yes, Dr. Langel?
Oh, thank you. I just had a question and they may not want the recognition and that's fine if they don't, but it seems to me that on a repeating basis, this family is phenomenal.
Yes.
And if they would be open to it, it seems to me it might be something we should recognize.
We've, we've been there and it just, they, they-
They don't want to.
They prefer to-
It just, obviously it's their choice, but boy, are they amazing.
But that has been their preference and we, we've honored that.
Okay. Fair enough. We all feel that way, Dr. Langel, that we're very appreciative and we've been very-
Okay, no, I'm glad we've checked.
You've been very generous.
Yeah.
Kurt, Mr. O'Brien?
Without focusing on the name, but the family is, he was a school board member in Muskego. So it's, it's kind of always surprised me that somebody's so vested in another district.
Really?
You know, he's very, he's very generous, I'd say. Him and his wife and, and his company, because it's matching funds, so. Thank you to Northwestern Mutual, they just throw that in there.
Yeah, they're wonderful.
Your agenda includes various categories for approval this evening. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for a separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Note, there were no expulsions. And if any board member at this time wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please so indicate at this time. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Edlund, will you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of three retirements, one resignation, one leave of absence, one contract, and one contract modification. The information was provided in your packet and an addendum was placed at your desk. I would like to make one note. We, on resignations and retirements, the second person down, Ms. Jamie Dittman was approved last month, so we didn't want to do a double jeopardy on her. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mann. Any discussion? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Presink.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Joseph Cohen.
Aye. Passes nine, zero, Sue.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Edlund. Moving on to our superintendent's report, Mr. Gray.
Okay, first of all, I'm going to talk about the weather, I would rather not, but we're going to. You know, there was a lot of concern last week with the, with the wind chills and so on. And, and there were a lot of people upset that we had stayed open, but again, given, given those temps, they were approximately 10 degrees below the, the wind chill warning. If we had closed any of those days and, and established a new benchmark at those levels, we'd be closing a lot this year. And so, why other districts of the east of us did it, given the, the actually balmy weather on Friday, I don't know. But again, you know, the Waukesha County Schools, both public and private, all stayed open all week. We, we again, will continue to offer options for parents, they can keep their kids home if they want to bring them two hours later when it warms up, they can do that. We'd rather have them for part of the day rather than none of the day. But we're not, we're not going to penalize them for attendance purposes if, if parents are really concerned with, with the weather, whether it's snow or cold. You know, we want, we want kids to be safe in the eyes of the parents and so we're going to continue to offer that, that, that flexibility. But again, our, our usual standard for closing is either winter weather warning or wind chill warning. And, and, you know, absent other, other information, we'll probably stay at that particular level. Each day we take it case by case. You might have an extremely cold day that doesn't hit a warning, but if there's a, a lot of ice or snow, those two things combined could, could cause us to, to close in that situation, which we had a, I believe, last year, one of the days was about minus 34, but there was snow and we thought with the two combined, it would be better to, to close. But that, that was an unusual situation. Next item, we, we are embarking on a, a pretty large project to review our, our grading program. I've been approached by a number of board members asking maybe it's time to review that particular area. And I think it's something we, we knew was, was coming at this point and we think the primary pieces are those, those, those pieces that the parents have access to that they use. And we want to make sure that whatever we do, that number one, it's, it's creating strong student achievement, but also it's understandable and, and is seen to be credible by, by parents. So that's our project, where it's going to be a relatively large project. We're hoping to have a, 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 a model proposal by the next CNI meeting. And I want to take, thank, you know, Ryan for heading this up. Jody Land has been working very hard on it as well and, and I feel pretty confident that, that we're headed in the right direction on this. State Educational Conference is next week and it's never too late to sign up if you've decided that you want to go and, and check out the, the south booth at the, the Convention Center, you can do that, but there's a number of other good, good networking opportunities as well as some, a number of good sectionals that are, that are very interesting. Last night, a lot of people have asked me, what did you think of the governor's State of the State address? And, you know, I listened to the piece on schools and obviously the big one was the, the, you know, the option on the common core. And I guess we'll see how that plays out, where that goes. I, I don't put too much into a State of the State address because it takes an assembly, a senate, a governor to, to make new law and that's, that's kind of where we'll be watching. that's kind of where we'll be watching. And we've already seen that the, the Assembly Accountability Bill differs pretty significantly from the Senate Accountability Bill that just came out today. So that'll be an interesting battle to see where that ends up. I personally like the, the Senate bill much better. I, I thought it was well thought through, and I actually had a chance to talk to Senator Farrell yesterday on that. And I, I like, I like where, the direction that's going in. And finally, I, Mr. Baumgart mentioned the Future City and, and Dream House competition at Saratoga, and I had a chance to judge today. And I have to tell you, our kids are maintaining a lot of creativity. And if you, if you've seen any of those, the primarily materials have to be recycled, recycled goods, and they, they, they did a wonderful job with that. But the level of creative, creativity is just, just fantastic. So they, it was, it was a great opportunity for me.
And I didn't get a chance to get to it this year, but I have been in, in previous years. And it's some of the thought that has gone into it and the ideas. It's really fun to see these young, young people in action, where their thoughts are at. And you got to sleep in today. You have a heat wave coming through now, so you didn't have to get up at two forty-five.
That's right. Yes, yes.
That's a good thing.
What a break. Yeah, that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. We'll move on to our, yes, Mrs. Reinichek.
I just wanted to say, if anyone hadn't seen the Future Cities, if they want, Friday is when they, from, I think it's one fifteen to two forty-five, you can see all of them. And then all the kids are going into the, the gymnasium to see if they're going on to MSOE. So it'll be the last time that you can see, and the Dream Homes as well.
Yeah, and MSOE has been holding that competition for, I'd say maybe four years, five, four or five years. Yeah. So pretty impressive. Thank you, Mrs. Reinichek for that reminder. We'll move on to our standard committee reports. We're starting this month with policy with Mrs. Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two discussion items on our agenda tonight. The first one is potential new policy fifty-one twenty-nine, Wisconsin Technical Excellence Higher Education Scholarship. Two thousand thirteen Wisconsin Act sixty requires school districts to adopt a board policy in order to award the Wisconsin Technical Excellence Higher Education Scholarship. This is for discussion item only tonight, and we will bring it back as an action item at the full February board meeting. And with that, does anybody have any suggestions, questions regarding that potential policy?
Mrs. Buzink.
Yes, I do. Is this a state initiative, Pat, that so the state will then fund this?
Correct.
Right.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And.
Dr. Langill.
Sorry. Mrs. Madden, do they want us, as we act on this in February, then to just join the consortium and say, yes, we want our students to be able to qualify?
They want us to set up a policy so that we can.
Okay, great.
Do that. And we will, as far as I know.
Okay.
Correct.
Mr. Bryan.
Any questions on that one?
Mr. Bryan.
You're too close.
I'll try to move farther away. What was the basis for the policy? Is it, is the, is the foundation for the policy?
This is, this is what the, you know, the law, I guess, to, in order to qualify for this, you have to have this policy. And this is a model policy that, that is pretty close to what DPI and, and the state is expecting from us.
So it's based on a DPI recommendation?
Oh, yeah. We, we made up very little of it. It basically comes from a model policy that, that we need to have in place in order to, for our kids to qualify for this.
So just to give, even though not too many people watch the board meetings, quite often our policies are based on models coming from.
Correct, correct.
And either the School Board Association, DPI, different things. And then we customize it to what we believe is best.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? Okay, Mrs. Madden.
Okay, our next discussion item is revisions to policy forty-one thirty-four, tutoring during the school day, and potential new policy forty-one thirty-four G, which are the guidelines for tutoring services. The current tutoring policy does not address tutoring for pay either within or outside of the school day, and does not address the use of facilities, nor the potential for a conflict of interest. The revisions to the policy and the additional guidelines address all of these areas. This is only a discussion item tonight, and it will be brought back next month for board action. Does anybody have any questions on this policy potential?
Dr. Langill.
Yeah, I just had a quick one, Pat. I'm assuming, having read it, but it was almost a week ago, that somebody who engages a tutor as a family that isn't on school district property, that's not our problem. That's a private thing.
Correct.
So it's really within the purview of our district.
Yeah, and our employees, et cetera.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Chris, heads from?
I'll just, I'll just clarify that the policy addresses a student's teacher providing tutoring services for remuneration. That's a potential conflict of interest, whether it's on school grounds or not.
One of our teachers.
No, one of the student's teachers. So if.
But if it isn't an employee and it isn't on our property, that was my question.
If it's not an employee and it's not on our property, that's.
Right.
Mr. Bryan.
Although it's a conflict, why is that a problem?
Did you just say, although that's a conflict, why is it a problem?
Right. The reason I, the reason I ask that question, if, if, if I'm a student teacher, and someone wants to contact me as a student teacher to provide additional tutoring services after school, it seems to be the convenience of the parent, the student, and the student teacher to do that. Why is it a problem, per se?
It gets sticky if a, all teachers provide extra help to their own students. And that's something that we expect of teachers. And if the teacher expects remuneration, or if the parents of the student expect to pay the teacher extra money for tutoring, that, that's a conflict, and that's something that calls into question the integrity of that teacher-student relationship.
Okay.
I, I think it could also be construed, there is a, there is a conflict of interest law with, with teachers selling goods or services to students, and it probably could morph into that. That could become an issue, too.
Mr. Bryan.
Yeah, the only, the only question I would have that kind of differentiates it is a student teacher is more of a student than a teacher in terms of, you know, they're there for, to be mentored as part of their educational program. It's kind of like the same thing that we have going.
Well, it could not be.
Yeah.
Yeah, the student teacher would be not paid.
Student teacher as in noun.
Okay.
Student, student and, student and teacher is together as the noun.
We have a semantics thing. We weren't understanding that. You said student teacher?
Yeah.
A student.
Yeah, I'm thinking when, if you mentioned student teacher, so I assume you meant, would it allow a student teacher, someone that's coming in as part of the educational program, would the policy allow them to do tutoring on school grounds?
A student teacher, that is, a student that is practicing to be a teacher.
Right.
From a university, yeah.
Is not an employee of our school district. And this policy is meant to apply to employees of the school district.
Yeah, student teacher would not be an employee.
So they could still, they could still be contracted independently to conduct tutoring on school grounds.
Outside of the school day.
Yes. In fact, many of our employees are contracted outside of the school day. We provide a tutor list, and the tutor list is in all of the buildings. We don't make any promises, or we don't provide anything that says we, this person's cleared, we, we agree with, with what they'd be teaching, or this would be good. We just provide a list to people. Some of them are employees, and some of them are not employees. This policy gets at how a teacher that works for us, that is an employee of us, needs to respond to requests for tutoring for remuneration. And it also gets at the use of facilities when someone is tutoring on the school district property and they're receiving extra pay for that.
Mr. Bryan.
However, if you read the policy, it would restrict, it would restrict.
What line are you in? Line are you on?
Third paragraph, where you say, employees, district-approved volunteers, or individuals working for an agency that has a contract with district to perform services, are the only individuals allowed to use district facilities or work with students enrolled in the district during the normal school day. It would mean that a student teacher that's not really an employee of the district could not tutor on school grounds during the school day, per this policy.
Well, as part of the job.
If extra help is, is being performed during the school day, you can use the facilities, and there's no remuneration because you're providing extra help.
But it says, if you read that paragraph, it would restrict, I mean, it would, it would, in reality, it would restrict anyone unless they're under those categories from tutoring children during the school day. I mean, I'm not sure what happened, but you, I think you'd have to make, you'd have to be careful about that. I mean, it does, it's more restrictive than I think what you're intending it to be.
Do we consider student teachers to be district-approved volunteers or individuals?
I would consider a student teacher as an individual that's working for an agency that has a contract with the district. We have agreements with colleges.
Right.
And although it's not a, I don't, some colleges have a contract that we sign, some do not.
Right.
They don't carry any monetary.
Right.
Value.
Okay. Well, if you consider them that, then I guess they're free to.
Other questions or points of discussion? To give Pat and her committee some feedback here.
We'll discuss it further at our next meeting, which is January twentieth at five-thirty. That completes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. We'll move on to our Technology Committee. Report given by Patrick McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening. Our next scheduled meeting will be January twenty-seventh at six p.m.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll roll into Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. Bryan.
Now, we had one action item. It's the approval of budget transfers and amendments. The committee has presented the budget changes that have been made through December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. A combination of transferred amendments were, were presented for approval. The committee approved the budget transfers and amendments as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion?
Yeah, there were a, a number of amendments. And if you take a peek, and transfers, if you take a peek and you look at our entire hundred and forty-six million dollar operating budget roughly, the few changes that we, we need to make after this much time is, is pretty amazing. So, you know, hats off to Lori and, and her team on doing a good job of bringing out the crystal ball and putting together the budget this year. So appreciate the hard effort, the, the hard work there. Mr. Bryan.
Real quick on that, you know, the biggest portion of the adjustments come in the grants that weren't, weren't, weren't received. And now you got to allocate for them in some way. So that was the biggest portion.
Had more revenues coming in than we thought, basically. All right, Sue, please take the roll call.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Buzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
And Joseph Cohn.
Aye. Passes nine, zero, Sue. Kurt?
We had one information item. It was the monthly budget report. The committee received the monthly budget report for activity through December two thousand fourteen. Thirteen million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars was reported into general fund revenue, and ten million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, nine forty-eight was expended during the month. One million, one hundred and nine, one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars was reported in the Special Education Revenue Fund, and two point two million, sixty-three thousand, five oh three was expended. So in the general fund, we were positive, and in the Special Education Fund, we were negative. The district is oper, is operating in full, in full compliance and accordance with our budget projection. There were no discussion items to report tonight. So, Mr. President, that does conclude my Facilities and Finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. I think you set a record there. That was pretty fast.
I've done them faster.
And slower.
I can echo that, Ann. Curriculum Instruction. The report is given by Mrs. Buzink.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mine's a little longer, I'm sorry to say, but not really, because we had.
Lots of good business.
Lots of good business. We had a wonderful meeting and accomplished a lot. We have one action item and a few discussion information items that appear on the agenda for curriculum instruction this month. The first ac, is an action item. It's a course name change in Art, Metal, and Jewelry. Art Coordinator Allison Olson recommended that the word jewelry be eliminated from the current course title, Art, Metal, and Jewelry. The art medium of art medals in the fine arts world is referred to as art medals, not jewelry. This change would be, better reflect the course content and will not mislead students during course selection. The course titles will be Art Medals One, Art Medals Two, and Art Medals Seminar. On a vote of five to zero, the Curriculum Instruction Committee approved renaming Art Medal and Jewelry One, Two, and Seminar. The courses will be listed as Art Medals One, Art Medals Two, and Art Medals Seminar, beginning in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. We now request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Art medals is a broad-based term to say, and I think I agree with the Policy Committee on changing the name, because I think sometimes we think of art metal, we tend to think of jewelry, which is an occupation in and of itself. There's a lot of jewelry stores we're all familiar with, and it's probably a good way to make a living if you're really into jewelry design. But we have in the district other opportunities for art metal, and I just wanted to share this with, maybe Mr. Crone might be the best person. But over at Waukesha North, where we have our industrial arts programs, we have some wonderful tools, including welding equipment, and I believe we have a plasma cutting machine over there, too. These are machines that are aided, or they function under software. You're able to cut things out of a plate of steel that can be cut with any shape or lettering, given a specific file format. And you can even buy templates online for a couple of bucks to be able to cut various things out of art, art designs. So if we wanted to cut out something that would enhance the area in Waukesha South and their music programs, there are stencils you can buy in Waukesha North. You can use their plasma cutter to be able to cut these shapes out. So I think it would be interesting to have cross-cultural, for lack of a better term, inner-school action, maybe, with these two programs. I understand this program is primarily offered at Waukesha South. Is that be correct? But, you know, it might be worth just, you know, exploring different areas of art metal to, to expand the course offerings and, and maybe widen the horizons a little bit to what that course actually entails. Just a thought.
Mr. Crone?
Definitely opportunity. We're seeing more and more courses that have once been independent, the arts, the main programs, the Project Lead the Way programs, combine and find projects that have a lot of crossover, a lot in the arts. So when, to remove the jewelry piece, as Ally Olson was here talking about that night, it takes it away from it was a limited thing, to where they're talking about they're doing a lot of soldering, they're learning about the, the, the hardened, or the, the metals and the melting points, and talking about the work with aluminum. So I think getting into that is a definite crossover. And I'll make sure I follow up for those opportunities to know that we have machinery that can do some large-scale projects, maybe even sculptures for the front of each of our buildings by the time we get to working with large-scale metals.
Sure. All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve course name changes for three courses for Metal Arts One, or Art Medals One, Art Medals Two, and Art Medals Three Seminar. Sue, will you take the vote?
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Buzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Joseph Cohn.
Aye. Passes nine, zero, Sue.
Okay, we've got two information items. The first is a K eight math update. Director of Elementary Education, Bob Antheline, and math effectiveness coach, Rose Palmer, shared information regarding the math review process. Currently, there are many resources being used by teachers and students throughout the school district in the area of math. In order to provide consistency, a math review is now being conducted to determine the digital resources that will be made available for K eight students and teachers. The second one is, relates to Special Education Policy and Procedure Manual. The School District of Waukesha Special Education Policies and Procedures Manual requires updating to reflect the change in the evaluation procedures for students being evaluated for specific learning disabilities. As a condition of funding, under the Individuals with Disability Education Act, local education agencies are required to establish written policies and procedures for implementing federal special education laws. In addition, Wisconsin law requires local educational agencies to establish written policies and procedures for implementing state and federal special education requirements. Assistant Superintendent Joe Cook is available here this evening if you have any questions after reviewing the document.
Why don't we just see if there is any right now?
Yeah, are there any questions?
It's a big document.
And I think you got it in your packets.
A lot to it, a lot of work, Joe. Want to make some comments?
Sure.
In the, in the document, the real substantial change, the, the School District of Waukesha did this in two thousand eight. The only substantial change to special education law between two thousand eight and our present The only substantial change to special education law between 2008 and our present time is when, in 2013, when the new learning disabilities criteria went into effect. So, that really is the reason why the policy manual was updated. So, that, most of that stuff was set and in place and currently being practiced in the district. Where the refinement came was around the SLD identification and the rationale for the change in that.
So, when the law's changed in 2013, how, were we practicing some of those things anyways, or did we have to change our practices quite a bit and adjust to the new laws?
In 2010, the state of Wisconsin decided that they would move from a discrepancy model comparing academic achievement to intellectual ability for identifying learning disabilities. They gave school districts approximately three years to make the adjustment, and by 2013, it was December 1st, 2013, school districts must use a response to intervention process to identify students with learning disabilities. So, that was the change. Based off of the, you know, information that was left of me and conversations that I've had, starting back, I think even prior to 2010, we began the RTI conversations in the district. So, we had a relatively smooth transition. We had to refine some practices just to make sure that we were targeting the discrete skills that are, we're required to target in an SLD evaluation.
Yeah, I think we started some of the RTI stuff when Mr. Hazely was still here. He was talking about it, so it has been, and he's been retired for quite a number of years now, so, yeah. Dr. Langill?
Not a question, but just compliments to Joe and other people whose hands were on this, and I mentioned this a week ago at our CNI meeting. It is so complex. I mean, I'm sure this is true of so many of these programs that deal with human beings with special needs or just human beings, but just to point to the board who wasn't at our meeting, if you just look on page seven of this handout, and then you look at what the authors have done in terms of trying to define apparent, and it goes on to page eight, and then you realize that people like Joe have to deal with this. Just read through bottom of page seven to top of page eight, and it just shows you the complexity of this. It's just unbelievable. So, hats off for working with this.
There's.
Amazing.
There's 10 bullets as to how to define apparent.
And they're amazing when you read them. Yeah, I mean, how to implement some of that, oh, boy.
Wow.
Yep.
Well, I've asked Joe if he would prepare some information for the CNI meeting to update us about the different disabilities that we service and how we service them, because it's different than it used to be. Now, it's called cross-categorical, is that right, Joe? So, it's not like it's compartmentalized as it used to be. So, he's gonna bring a report to the CNI committee, and I think I heard you ask that at FNF, you wanted some information in that. Okay. Okay, moving on then. Middle school elective wheel. Ryan Conan and Jason Sadowski began conversation on preliminary plans to unlock the current middle school wheel. Principal Sadowski shared the guiding principles that are shaping the planning sessions. Currently, the middle school elective wheel requires students to take six, six-week courses in each of the elective fields, both sixth and seventh grade. The middle school administrative team is examining current enrollment trends, offerings, delivery models, and desired learning outcomes as part of the review process. New proposals are being designed to begin the process of opening up the wheel framework. And while administration sees this process unfolding over the next few years, some preliminary steps will need to be taken each year to aid in the overall transition. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, you're looking for discussion on this, Barb?
If you want, if you have any questions or you want to discuss it, et cetera. There was a, there was a nice handout in your packet showing where we're going with this. So, it's going to expand it.
Yeah, I think that, in the packet, it kind of shows where we're coming from.
Coming from, right.
Not really where we're going.
Not necessarily.
And so, they're gonna come back to our committee with a lot of specifics in terms of how this impacts, you know, instrumental music, orchestra, a lot of other programs. So, we'll see it again, and so will the whole boy. Because this is just sort of base square one.
Right, but it'll have different opportunities for kids. Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, I was gonna say essentially the same thing. It's premature. Certainly, I can't ask questions at this point, but all they were doing is presenting to us the fact that this will be going into a study mode, and they will be coming forward with a recommendation and not ready to do that just yet.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Just so you know that there are some issues with the current wheel being a little bit too rigid for students, and in some cases, the students are already beyond what's in the wheel. Somebody, for instance, has had six years of Spanish already. Why expose them on a basis, a very basic level of Spanish, when they probably could be taking Spanish two?
Sure, sure.
So, it's things like that that are dated.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, that, you know, reading through the information, that was what popped out at me, that I appreciate the administration's taking a renewed look at this. When you look at how that wheel was designed some time back, where you're dictating that people take Spanish and French, and you could tell that there was a, someone who's really big in foreign languages that was pushing the wheel. Why Spanish and French, maybe it should be Latin.
Yeah. I brought that up. I did, I did last Tuesday.
Yeah, so, but the reality is, it should be based more on what students want than what we're gonna tell them to do, because you cause disengagement then, and if you look at the successful models in other countries, they tend to tailor their education to where students want to go going forward, and I think that we should be looking at that for our model here in Waukesha at the middle school level, which is where they start in other places.
Right. Mr. Krone?
Just real quickly, spot on, like we said, it's a quick early discussion. In 2010, 11, when our sixth graders first moved to middle school here, there was a preliminary team that looked at the middle school elective model, the current one, put together a framework, and it said that it wanted a more personalized model that it reached some needs. At that time, the proposal that we currently, is still what we currently have. Also, imagine since 2010, which doesn't seem that far back, we have dual-language schools, STEM schools, and integrated art schools, where students are coming out well-advanced of the engineering courses we're offering, foreign language courses offering, or the art offering. So, students are coming in and not necessarily under the term exposure anymore, but they're wanting to go much deeper with their learning, and this is going to, the term unlock is what we're using, because right now, it's really well-locked in. Not only locked in what courses you take, but it's locked in what periods of the day you have to have that. So, we do plan a small pilot next year in a couple of areas across where Quest is at Butler, because those schools, the students in that program are already a multi-age piece, and it was already causing some conflict. And actually, some students this year at Flight Academy are already exploring with some of these flexible options as well. So, we're looking at some flexible ways to bring this in, but a full-scale model is our target by 2015, 16, and we will have all three middle schools a part of the planning, as well as teacher teams, to get some proposals going.
Excellent, excellent. Any, anyone else with some input or questions? Well, you got, you got some good, some good information.
Right. Well, thank you, Mr. President, and that concludes the curriculum instruction committee report. And our next meeting will be held Tuesday, February 3rd.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Moving on to our human resources committee report given by Mr. Edlin.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we'll move into our other business. We do have three items that are listed on the other business. We really do not have a need for item letter C, just so you know. But we will start off with our compensation committee, a report given by Kurt O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that the compensation committee be able to report now and then on what's going on in the compensation committee. I think it's important for not only the full board, but our educational community, our stakeholders, our taxpayers, our district employees, to hear what we're talking about committee. They're open-session committees, there's, you know, most of the topics are open session now, and it's a changing environment from when we were doing the bargaining stuff, where everything was done in closed session, and we didn't report publicly what we'd been talking about in compensation committee. We are covering complex problems in compensation committee, because we're dealing with the non-union environment, and we're making, we're making adjustments relative to now we have to think through these things very detailed and very complex manners. And one of the reasons I want to bring this routinely to the full board is so that you don't get dumped with a complex problem and be told to vote for it. I don't think that's the right way to go. So, we did have a meeting on Monday, January 12th. Committee members proposed, committee members postponed any action and would like to see a comparison of the various options, including impact on school finances and the OPEB liability, savings and operations cost, the potential participation rate in a health care plan, and the impact of any ideas we have on recruiting and retention. So, that kind of defines how complex that whole puzzle is, because there's a lot of stuff in there. The most immediate next step for this board to take and the committee to take will be the inclusion, it will require a board action to implement a safe harbor health plan to satisfy the Affordable Care Act requirement. And if there's any questions on that tonight, you are free to ask them, and it'll be answered by the administrative team. Discussion also took place regarding the implicit subsidy, which is the extra cost of covering our retirees versus our regular employees, and the committee was open to a two- or three-year phase in the plan through creation of a separate insurance group called Active Retirees. A question was brought up regarding the limitations of identifying current retirees into this group. Administration will review retirement records and report back. According to an actuary study, removing the entire retiree, removing the retiree subsidy would have a significant impact on the OPEB liability. And I opened it up, if there's any questions right now regarding anything I just said, but it's a little bit premature to ask questions, except for the fact that we will be coming back rather shortly with this issue of a safe harbor health plan to comply with the Affordable Care Act. That will happen probably at the next February meeting, board meeting.
Any questions? Mr. Edlin?
A while back, Kurt, we, I don't know if you, that was during your absence from the board, but we had approved a plan to develop a strategic compensation plan, and that was kind of in the works. It was put off due to other things that took priority, and I just wanted to know, maybe from Ms. Headstrom, are we overlapping here?
Chris, do you want to?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the question. Is what portion overlapping?
Well, we were, we were looking at, we had contracted with a company to help us develop a strategic compensation plan, and I'm just wondering if, are we starting to overlap in, by, you know, kind of taking this on ourself and looking at compensation in one direction, and we had a recommendation from another company to provide strategic compensation?
Yeah, we're actually starting to take a look at their recommendations and at other aspects, too, and that's what the compensation committee is essentially reviewing at this time. We're also going to, I think, January 28th, we're targeting our next workshop.
A board work session.
A board work session that will cover much more of this. We had a couple of work sessions already on this, so it continues. I mean, there's many facets to this and very complex, as you know, Mr. Edlin.
But I think if I.
Mr. Gray?
The compensation, as in salary, merit pay, that type of thing, that was, that was a whole different project from this. I mean, they're two separate companies. One is dealing with benefits, one is dealing with the, you know, the salary compensation. And that particular package is, I think, pretty close to being wrapped up. So, I don't know if that helps.
But that needs to be reported back out to us, because we haven't had that reported out to us from a compensation plan, the one that we started, actually, a couple of years ago. That has not been reported back out to us yet, Steve.
Right, and I guess that's, when I think of compensation, I think of the total package, because that's the bottom dollar. When you have an employee, it's how much you're paying them in the total package. And so, if we have a recommendation from a private firm that we consulted with as to how to go about doing that, and now we're discussing at the other end, the other portion of this and how we want to do it, are we not, you know, going back, we spent $77,000 to, you know, work with this company in order to develop something for us, and I have yet to see exactly, we haven't made a decision on what they recommend, and now we're kind of going off in a different direction on the total package.
And I agree with you that we need to make sure that what steps we take moving forward make sense and that we all understand what the big picture is. I agree with that, and that's gonna be our job to make sure that we communicate things appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Langill?
This isn't a substantive comment, so forgive me, because I'll leave those to Kurt. As I read through these for about the fourth time, I'm trying to figure them out. But I do have a comment just in terms of procedure, because I like it when Sue does a survey as to what night we might want to meet. Now, I can't necessarily make it. If eight people could make it, and I can't, that's life. But this is the first time I've heard about the 28th. I can't make it, and I didn't hear anything about how we found that date. So, I guess I'm just saying procedurally, it's frustrating.
Mr. O'Brien?
Well, let me, since it's still my report.
So, you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Edlin. I think you bring up a point. I wasn't here when that happened, and I'm, I'll get together with Ms. Headstrom and make sure that I'm more aware of what that was and see how that plays into what we're doing and make sure. I think you bring up an excellent point. If we paid someone $77,000 and we haven't heard back what that was as of yet, then I understand that, and I appreciate the comment. Regarding scheduling the time, that kind of comes from the board president through HR, and when they ask for a work session, it doesn't really come through the committee. But I think the most, yeah, I think the most important thing for everyone to be aware of is this high-deductible health care plan that will be coming back to the board for action and approval is a statutory compliance relative to the Affordable Care Act. We are working on a much more broader, much more depth, in-depth, something along the lines that Steve's concerned about, a way to approach our health care, employee retention, and things like that, and that was the purpose of making sure we bring this to the board on a routine basis, so we just don't hit you with all this complexity and say, "Vote for it," because it is complex.
Yes, it is.
And Ellen, I'm not sure if we actually decided on that date, Sue, did we?
We did not.
Okay.
Oh, so there's a floating hope.
That's my mistake, Chris. I thought we had actually.
Yeah, this is the first time.
You know, and I thought we actually did the call around, and.
No.
I got a date up in my head that we're targeting.
Well, we were trying for the 28th, but we never got as far as calling around.
Okay, that's my mistake.
So, it's not scheduled yet.
Sorry to.
No, no, that's all right. And it turns out, I guess Pat couldn't make it either. I guess none of us heard of it, so, anyway, see what happens.
I apologize. Mr. O'Brien?
So, okay, so I'm about ready to conclude my report, otherwise this could go on for all night. I just want to say, say one thing when it comes to the compensation committee and the environment we're in. We have to remember that we're not like a lot of employers around town. We have competitors all around us that want our teachers, and, and the ability of our teachers to choose to move is relatively easy compared to if you switch an employer, let's just say like GE Medical, you might have to move to St. Louis, uproot your family. But here, it's just a matter of a different car drive. So, how you compensate your employees, how you treat your employees, their work environment, what they perceive as fairness, that's a very important thing for a school district to focus on, and if we want to have a good, quality school district with the right people educating our children and actually administering our staff. So, it's such a critical thing in this, basically, what I call this free-agent environment, that we handle these things properly. So, it's gonna take time, and we're gonna do a lot of thinking, and we're gonna try to do the best we can to benefit our district as a whole. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Um, as I had mentioned before, there, in letter B and letter C, those are both closed sessions. We do know, we do not have a need for letter C, but we do still have a need to go into closed session for letter B. Mr. Baumgart?
I move that we adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parentheses one, parentheses C, to consider employment promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data on any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
Okay, move. Motion, motion on the floor, second by Mrs. Baumgart. Sue, will you take?
No, that's not Mrs. Baumgart. She's
I'm sorry.
What is happening here?
Wow. Sorry, Barb. Sorry to Kathy. I'm on a roll tonight. See, I, I tossed out January twenty-eighth for a meeting and
Sorry.
And then I got on a roll here. Sue, will you take the roll call, please?
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart. Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Comall.
Aye. Your wife didn't know she was on the board. Passes nine zero. Just so everyone knows, once we come back out of closed session, we will reconvene into open session. So, I'm not sure how long this will take, though. Do we have an estimated time, Chris? Thirty minutes, maybe?
Oh, yeah, thirty minutes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone, for being here and we'll go into closed session now.
No, it's right here.